Good evening, I'd like to call. Good evening, I'd like to call the Long Branch City Council meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
I'm here.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly's absent, Mr. Dangler?
Here. We please stand and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Long Branch Mayor, City Council, and the Administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respected and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Madam Clerk?
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. Holiday presentation. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank all those who participated in the 2023 City of Long Branch Holiday Decorating Contest, and three winners were chosen by the committee. We'd like to present them with their $150 Ace Hardware gift cards, and thank you all for displaying your holiday spirit in Long Branch, and congratulations, and Council President Dangler will take it from here. We have a certificate and the award.
All of these certificates read the same, so I'll read just the one. City of Long Branch Certificate of Recognition. This certificate is presented to Melissa and James Johnson for exhibiting outstanding festive spirit and spreading joy in the City of Long Branch for 2023 Holiday Decoration Contest, presented on the 14th day of February 2024, signed by Mayor Palone and myself. Melissa and James Johnson?
Hi.
And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nicola Manidi Jr.? Thank you and congratulations. Telma Vasquez? All right, congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reading and approval of the previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the January 24th, 2024 meeting.
Some moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly's absent, Mr. Dangler?
Abstain. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration. Oh, one dash twenty-four, ordinance, the City of Long Branch, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, adopting certain amendments to Broadway Gateway Redevelopment Plan as adopted by section 345 dash 101 of the Code of the City of Long Branch, and any subsequent ordinance is thereto. This ordinance was introduced on January 24th, 2024, and amends the Broadway Gateway Development Plan Designs Standards and permits single-family homes as a permitted use. I need a motion to open the public hearing on this ordinance only.
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. If any member of the public has a comment to make on this ordinance only, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once on this ordinance.
Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, requesting one-minute notification. The ordinance has permitted use gross covered area of a dwelling unit is 800 square feet. Single-family residential. The building envelope is an R4, area yard and bulk requirements. Family residential zone district. For the record, Mr. Raynall, is this amendment to accommodate freestanding, single-family structures or attached, single-family townhome development, or both?
No, just single-family detached, single-family homes.
Detached. Eight hundred square foot. Quite small. What is the necessity for single-family structures that brought about the objective to amend the Broadway Gateway Redevelopment Zone, Mr. Raynall?
We actually had an applicant who wanted to build a single-family resident and we realized that the way the plan was written, it was encouraging people to take down, single-family residents and build multifamily housing, and we thought that that wasn't something that we wanted to encourage, that we were okay with people developing them as, single-family lots.
The Broadway Gateway has different sectors for different uses. There's commercial interests, there's residential interests. Where are the single-family homes going?
They'd be permitted uses in all of the zone, so there isn't any specific places, just in that zone.
You had an applicant come, and you want to accommodate the applicant, and now there's no specific area of beachfront?
Whitmer, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask, I didn't recall, I was just asking Mr. Shirley. It's on Whitmer.
Whitmer? And are you certain that part of Whitmer is in the beachfront Broadway Gateway Redevelopment Zone?
Yeah.
And just to accommodate, you have no other reasons as to why you're accommodating this individual?
That's what prompted it, and it made sense to the city because we don't want to be in a situation where we're necessarily encouraging people to tear down, single-family houses and build, multiple-family houses. We thought that it's not, it is not an improper outcome in that zone for, single-family houses to be built.
Mr. Raynall, if so in what you're saying, why couldn't you just do a continuing use for that sector of the Broadway Gateway Redevelopment Zone where the sectors of a mix of multi- and single families exist?
I don't know what you mean by do.
Continuing use in the Broadway Gateway Redevelopment Zone for that residential sector?
If you mean, why couldn't we grandfather in existing, single-family homes? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if it's already multi- and single use, it could have just been continued use in the Broadway Gateway.
Except under, you know, a basic tenet of land use law, if somebody wanted to tear down that and rebuild it, then they would need a use variance. This is, the proper way to do it is this, it's not to require the zone to be developed through use variances. This is just the better practice.
You're relieving an individual from going before the board?
No, no, if necessarily, they still have to go before the board, they just won't need a variance. Yes, the answer is, if your question is, are we relieving them of having to go get a use variance, we absolutely are, because we believe we shouldn't discourage people from building, single-family homes there.
And you don't believe you're treading, your position is you're not treading on spot zoning to accommodate this individual?
No, because we changed, it's not for one parcel, it's for the entire.
One-minute warning.
Changed the entire zone. We just made it a permitted use in that entire redevelopment plan.
So then it's not limited to this individual on Whitmer?
Absolutely not, no, it's for any place in the zone. We just thought that it was a good idea.
You thought it was a good idea?
Yes, sir.
Has there been any, single-family development scheduled for Chandler Maps property at the end of Broadway?
The city owns Chandler Maps at the parking lot.
Yeah. Twenty-five million dollar RAB Kushner, is that still in effect?
The twenty-five, I don't know. I don't believe so.
Which one?
Chandler Map.
Twenty-five million dollar RAB Chandler Maps.
Down to twenty, it was reduced to twenty, and that was the boardwalk and?
No, no, the point of it is that Chandler Maps is a city-owned parking lot.
You just don't know what you're doing. I'm requesting a no vote on this. To accommodate an individual on Whitmer is one thing, now to take the position it can be anywhere within the Broadway Gateway Zone, it's too vague. I'm requesting a no vote.
I need a motion to close.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. This is the second reading of ordinance oh, one dash twenty-four, and a motion to adopt the second reading, second and final reading, and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly's absent, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance oh, three dash twenty-four, and ordinance amending chapter 345 zoning by amending sections of 345 dash 42 off-street parking regulations. This ordinance was introduced on January 24th, 2024, and adds tractor-trailers under subsections 345 dash 42C, 4B. Parking areas in residential districts has vehicles prohibited regardless of the weight classification. I need a motion to open the public portion of this ordinance only.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. If there's any member of the public that has a comment to make on this ordinance only, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once on ordinance oh, three dash twenty-four.
Robert Russo, property owner here in Long Branch. I have a question on this, is this going to apply unilaterally through the new district?
Sir, could you raise the mic just a little bit? Thank you.
Yes. Is this ordinance for commercial vehicles is going to apply only in residential zones, or is this all through the areas? I mean, is there a restriction? I have people that rent sections from me that have tractor-trailers parked off Ocean Boulevard. Is this going to be affected in that area, lot 305?
All right, is it residentially zoned?
No, it's a commercial-industrial.
Then this ordinance wouldn't affect?
Just for residential.
This is just for residential, so this ordinance wouldn't affect that?
And what about on the Long Branch Avenue side?
It would affect it there.
It would affect it there, right, because that's residential there.
It would affect it only on the street parking?
Or in a residential driveway.
Because I have residential adjoining the commercial property. There's not enough room there in the residential to get a tractor trailer in there, so that's not an issue. But they do have pickup trucks, and you said, any commercial vehicle. So if the pickup truck is registered as a commercial vehicle, which they can be, they would be restricted?
We only added tractor-trailer to the ordinance.
They currently are restricted.
Because it said, any commercial vehicles.
Yeah, they currently are restricted. This ordinance isn't doing that. This ordinance is just adding tractor-trailers because it was kind of a technical correction because we wanted to make sure that they were covered also. But the commercially-registered vehicles are already prohibited from parking in residential zones.
Is that for overnight parking only, or for daytime parking? Because you have Monmouth Rubber and?
I think it's from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM.
9:00 PM to 5:00 AM?
Yep.
Okay, so it's just for the evening? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, just to be clear, sir, the ordinance that's in place remains the same, we're just adding the words tractor and trailers to it.
I need a motion to close.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is the second, second reading of ordinance zero, three dash twenty-four. I need a motion to adopt on the second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly's absent, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance oh, four dash twenty-four, and ordinance amending chapter 244, parking lots and meters, attachment one, schedule A, metered parking area of the Code of City of Long Branch. This ordinance was introduced on January 24th, 2024, and amends chapter 244, parking lots and meters, the Code of City of Long Branch, making various changes to the schedule A, metered parking area, including revising the meter parking for Madison Avenue, Second Avenue, and including Long Branch Avenue and Cooper Avenue, schedule A. I need a motion, no, I need a motion to revise the ordinance oh, four dash twenty-four by removing Madison Avenue entire length from section one, chapter 244, parking lots and meters, attachment one, schedule A, metered parking area.
Some moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly's absent, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. I need a motion to open the public hearing on this ordinance as revised.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. If any member of the public has a comment to make on this ordinance only, please come to the mic, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may speak on this ordinance zero, four, twenty-four.
Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, requesting one-minute notification, if needed. All right. In the ordinance, Madison Avenue entire length, south side. What is the clarification this evening now on Madison Avenue?
That's taken out, that provision is taken out of the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's taken out of the ordinance.
Madison Avenue remains as it was last season.
Correct.
Except for the five spaces up by the boardwalk.
From McKinley to Ocean Avenue, or McKinley to the boardwalk.
Mr. Shirley, why the exception of the five spaces by the boardwalk?
It really was part of the original parking lot, we just never included it. So up when you pull up Madison Avenue to the left, those five spots, they're now metered also, just those spots.
All right, also on here, Cooper Avenue, from McKinley Street to Old Ocean Avenue, both sides, north and south.
Yeah, that's McKinley to the boardwalk, which is?
I would like Mr. Shirley to answer the question, please, the administrator responsible for this?
Sure, Mr. Lapore.
There's only parking on one side there, that's on the side where the Promenade Beach Club is. There are like five or six individual spots there, it's just for those spots.
What is the purpose of that for?
To make them metered parking. Everything, if you go up and down the beachfront, everything east of that area, except for what we're correcting, we're always metered, we're just making it uniform.
Okay, keep those comments in mind, Mr. Shirley. In this ordinance, Long Branch Avenue, between Cooper and Broadway, north and south, nine to seven, two dollars an hour, Monday through Thursday, three dollars an hour, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, holidays. This isn't close to the boardwalk Promenade. Why, what is the reason for Long Branch Avenue?
Long Branch Avenue, it was a recommendation by the officer in charge of our meters, we brought it to council, and they thought it was a good idea, based on where people are parking.
Based upon where people are parking?
For the beach.
I understand your answer, if council decided this, this was really low of council. One block west of Ocean Boulevard? You're talking at least two full city blocks back from the Promenade and the ocean, where it became a place for people to park so they wouldn't be held hostage to the prices at Pier Village for parking, so that they could access the beach? That's why people were forced to find a way on Long Branch Avenue. And now you're going to take away that from them? That's really low, council, really low. One can park a car for less than Atlantic City to source the casinos than parking on the streets in Long Branch to access the beach. And you don't have to walk from Long Branch Avenue to the Promenade in Atlantic City to get to a casino. No. With the man, this is a no vote. It's discriminatory, it's now becoming discriminatory, no.
Any motion to close?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? This is the second reading of ordinance zero, four dash twenty-four. I need a motion to adopt the second and final reading and advertise, excuse me, the final reading and revise and advertise according to law. Roll call, excuse me, I need a motion.
Some moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly's absent, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance oh, five dash twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the sale of one property on Cottage Place, known as Block 148, Lot 10. This ordinance was introduced on January 24th, 2024, and authorizes the City of Long Branch to sell vacant property. I need a motion to open a public hearing on this ordinance only.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. If any member of the public has a comment to make on this ordinance, please come to the mic, come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once on ordinance oh, five dash twenty-four.
Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, requesting one-minute notification, if needed. All these years, why didn't the city just decide to install a sidewalk there, where it's needed? They own the property, why didn't they install a sidewalk?
You want me to answer, Mr. Lapore, or not?
No, the administrator.
Okay, that's fine, somebody else can. Charlie, you want to answer?
There was a tree preservation issue there that we were dealing with.
A tree preservation issue? How did the curb cut, if there's a tree preservation issue, how did the curb cut get across the city property?
I don't know that.
We don't know that. So we can't put a sidewalk there because of a tree issue, but the curb cut can go there because of the tree issue? I realize this is well prior to you, Mr. Shirley, that I do understand. I have questions. To this ordinance, where's the city's title for what it's selling here?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
The title to the land, it's not attached to the ordinance.
Well, we never attach the deed to these ordinances, ever.
Mr. Raynall, where is the appraisal to provide the reasons for the $1,000 determined by Gagliano?
You said title.
No, that was the first question.
Okay.
Now you answered it, we don't provide it.
The appraisals are never attached to the ordinance, they're available if you want to get them, but they're not, they're never attached to the ordinance.
How did the appraisal become attached to 105 Long Branch Avenue?
Don't know.
The inconsistency is mind-boggling. Most basic to this ordinance is the survey. Where is the survey to this ordinance?
There is no survey, and it's not most basic to the ordinance, in all due respect, you would not get a $5,000 survey on a $1,000 piece of property, that's ridiculous.
Excuse me, the survey is basic for the meets and bounds because the configuration of this property, this slim parcel of property, it was reconfigured because of Ocean Boulevard coming through. It's leftover. We could still have other uses for this, a sidewalk, whatever. I'd like to know the determination for $1,000. Who came up with the $1,000 figure?
It was done by an appraisal, you know the answer.
No, I don't know the answer, because as you stated, the appraisal's not connected to the ordinance, it's not attached. Unlike 105 Long Branch Avenue at the last council meeting, where you had Gagliano's appraisal attached. It refers to Gagliano in the ordinance, therefore, the appraisal was done. What do you mean, you're not going to spend $5,000 for $1,000? The ordinance states, the appraisal was done by Gagliano.
Sure, but, Mr. Lapore, you keep jumping between things.
No, I don't, I'm straight on.
You were, no, because you never go straight on, you always zigzag.
I'm straight on.
Talking about the survey, and then you were talking about the title, then you're talking about the appraisal, and you pretend what's important and what's not important, and I, sorry, I can't half the time figure out what your questions are.
Well, that's understandable, okay? The ordinance has no title, ordinance has no appraisal, like 105 Long Branch Avenue, city property, at the last council meeting ordinance, ordinance has no survey, you have no reason or an explanation, although you refer to Gagliano in the ordinance as to why $1,000 is labeled. So therefore, I'm requesting a no vote. This is, I'm glad the council didn't go into the banking business, this country would have more banking failures than it does now. This is ridiculous, no.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. This is the second reading of ordinance zero, five dash twenty-four. I need a motion to adopt the second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly's absent, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction, zero, six dash twenty-four. This is the first reading of ordinance zero, six dash twenty-four, entitled ordinance designating no parking at any time, east side of Westwood Avenue, starting at the northeast corner apex of Westwood Avenue and Willow Avenue, ending 191 North thereof. This ordinance prohibits parking at all times, east side of Westwood Avenue, starting at the northeast corners, apex of Westwood Avenue and Willow Avenue, ending 191 North. I need a motion to introduce the first reading, advertise, posted according to law, and set for public hearing, February 28th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly is absent, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Public portion of resolution. And all general comments, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, requesting one-minute notification. Mr. Dangler is head of this council. When does this council, if not already, commence the process of ensuring charges are filed against the Monmouth County SPCA for criminal conduct or failing to follow through on a case of animal abuse that resulted in the death of an 11-month-old dog? And subsequently, Mr. Dangler, when does the council intend by measure to render the Monmouth County SPCA contract null and void because of this criminal incident?
I don't have that answer, sir.
You don't have that answer? Are you aware of the fatality that occurred on Lafayette Street in Long Branch of an 11-month-old dog?
I believe it was brought to this council several meetings ago, I believe it was.
It was brought to your attention several meetings ago, and you haven't acted on it yet. It resulted in the relieving of two employees from the city. I remind the council, the main focus of this is the fatality. I remind the council, the main focus of this is the fatality of a dog. Animal abuse by the Monmouth County SPCA. On Monday evening, yet another adjournment of 907 Ocean LLC concerning their continued lack of compliance for two and a half years now to provide a title search to 907 Ocean Avenue. Independent of the state easement dating back to the 1930s, there also exists grants of easements on 907 Ocean Avenue back to the 1870s through the 1890s. It is with demand of this council that at the April 8th zoning board meeting, 907 Ocean LLC produce a 160-year title search. We forget, council. We fought this once before, and we won. The access groups for the beach will be fighting this again, and we're prepared to go to court to win again, to maintain that easement for access across 907 Ocean Avenue. You've gotten fair warning. Mr. Raynaud, as you have continued to defer the Pier Village 3 audits matter to the Redevelopment Council, McManaman, Scotland, and Baumann, could you please tell us, since the last council meeting, has the city established contact with the Redevelopment Council so as to determine the reasons as for, one, why they have not followed through on Pier Village 3 financial agreement, compliance issues? Two, why they have failed to properly draft and execute the required assignment and assumption agreements as was clearly anticipated in the financial agreement? And three, as well as demand outstanding CPA audit compliance? The answer, Mr. Raynaud?
I have not spoken to Redevelopment Council in the last two weeks.
In the last three weeks, you have not spoken to the Redevelopment Council? Has anybody in the administration spoken to the Redevelopment Council, McManaman, from the last council meeting, over the last three weeks? Nobody. Counsel, this is disgusting. It truly is disgusting. Thanks for burning the taxpayers of this city. Mr. Martin, at the last council meeting, I asked, quote, "Can you explain why you haven't contacted Charles Kushner directly?" End quote.
One-minute warning.
This concerning the audits. And you responded, quote, "No, I cannot explain," end quote. Mr. Martin, over the last three weeks, have you found the opportunity to contact Charles Kushner directly? Yes or no?
I don't have the direct number.
You don't have the direct number. Nobody in this city has the direct number to Charles Kushner, a developer in this city. That answer and the conduct of the council tonight has insulted the people of this city. It's completely disgusting again. Counsel, you exemplify junk government.
I need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the list of resolutions?
No changes were made.
We can take the list of resolutions as a consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly is absent. Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Applications and appointment following members of the Long Branch Fire Department. Jonathan Yamana?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly is absent. Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Miscellaneous, for the good of the order, Councilman Viera.
Thank you, Council President. I want to congratulate all the winners for the decoration, and I want to thank everybody out for coming out tonight. Thank you. Good night.
Councilwoman Vogt?
Thank you, Council President. My thanks also and congratulations to our winners, and quite simply, I wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wittes?
Aye, good evening, everyone. I'd like to remind everyone that the Hometown Hero banners are now on sale, and if you go on our website, you'll see them, that they're available. And I'd also like to thank everyone for coming this evening, and happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Thank you.
Mayor Pallone?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. Also, I want to let you know you could join us tomorrow morning for coffee and pastries with the mayor and council. That's tomorrow morning between 8:00 and 9:30 at the Arts and Cultural Center up on Broadway and Branchport Avenue. We'll be displaying different city projects, and city officials will be on-site to answer any questions you have about the city or those projects or anything you might be interested in discussing with us. Also, on February 22nd, at 6:00 PM, we'll be having artist reception for our Black History Month exhibit. Join us for food, live entertainment, fashion, spoken word, and more. That's also at the Cultural Center between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock on the 22nd. That's next week. And go to our website, longbranch.org, for upcoming information about our annual Easter egg hunt for the kids and free pictures with the Easter Bunny, also at the Arts and Cultural Center. That's usually a big hit with the kids. Again, thank you all for coming, and have a great week.
Also, congratulations to the winners. It's nice to see different people win this holiday decoration contest. Valentine's Day to everyone. Please get home safe. Wear your mask when, when you're in big crowds. Enjoy the rest of the winter. Good evening. And, oh, sorry, before I say, "Have a good evening."
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now have a good evening.